All right, good evening. It is Wednesday, November 6, 2019. I call this meeting of the Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If everyone would rise and join me in resetting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin with the roll call.
Commissioner Cybo.
President.
Commissioner Costello.
President.
Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Sando. Commissioner Wheaton Smith.
Present.
All right, very good. And we do have a quorum. Since we sure decided to show up, um, we will move on to approval of minutes of the September 3 regular meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yep.
Entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the Tuesday, September 3 minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Silver City. A second minute.
Our motion in a second. Any discussion? Hey, now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. We have no old business on the agenda, so we will move on to public hearings. Begin with ZC 19-02, a request for a zone change from residential B and industrial zoning district to residential B1 for property located in the Vista de Plata subdivision. I'd like to ask everyone who's present tonight, who is possibly, potentially, might want to testify in this hearing even a little bit, if you would come to the podium now and get sworn in. Um, the way this works is, if you get sworn in, that doesn't mean that you have to testify, but if you're not sworn in and you decide you want to jump in later, you have to stop everything and swear in then. So, if you're going to testify in this hearing, you think you might want to, now's the time to come up and, uh, and get sworn. Okay? I guess it's, uh, just sworn. Uh, repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Priscilla Adaganda.
Do solemnly swear.
Solumely swear.
That the testimony I am about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
On penalty of perjury.
On penalty of perjury.
Thank you. Looks like this will be an easy one. All right, then, uh, we'll turn to our, uh, lone, uh, our lone, uh, testifier here to, uh, give us the staff report. Thank you.
This is ZC 19-02, amendment to the official zoning map from industrial and residential B to residential B1 zoning district for the Vista de Plata subdivision. The Vista de Plata subdivision is currently zoned residential B and industrial. This proposed zone change would rezone the whole subdivision to residential B1. The change will not affect the current residential subdivision since there are protective covenants in place which states single-section manufactured homes are not allowed. This change would be a correction to the zoning map as well as an implementation of an existing zoning district which has not been used. Section 3.1.3, residential B restricted single-family and attached housing district. The residential B single-family and attached housing district is intended to accommodate low, medium, and moderate density, single-family, two-family, and multifamily residential developments containing no more than 10 dwelling units, not including single-section manufactured homes, and to provide a land use protection for areas that develop in such a manner. The Town of Silver City Comprehensive Plan of 2017, page 3-24C, Development Regulation and Zoning, the township coordinate land use and community design goals with the goals of other planning elements such as housing, community design, transportation, and economic development. The Town Development Regulation should reflect this integrated approach to planning, ensuring all new developments have beneficial influence on the quality of life to improve future opportunities for the community. The zoning map should be updated to reflect all categories and current uses. So this is currently what the zoning map looks like, and as you can see, it's split-zoned, and some of that residential area is industrial. The rest is residential B. So this is the proposed zone change, and it would change the whole area of the subdivision, including some of open space and some other space on the left for future development. It'll rezone it all to residential B1. Here are some pictures of the subdivision. There's currently six houses there. When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes its recommendation to the town council and when the town council makes the final decision, they shall at a minimum make at least one of the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the properties surrounding uses population, forecast, rate of land consumption, or other factors. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. The proposed amendment responds to change conditions such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use of further studies that have been completed since adoption of the land use code. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation, and the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objections of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code. It is the recommendation from the Community Development Department that this zone change may be recommended to town council based on the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The zoning map should be updated to reflect all categories and current uses. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. Implementation of the zoning district is a way of meeting goals in the comprehensive plan since it has not been utilized. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. This proposed change will stay aligned with the particular purposes of the land use code, specifically purpose 1.2.5, which states to encourage a more efficient use of land and public services and to reflect changes in technology of land development. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objections of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code. This change will not adversely impact the adjoining properties because it will not allow substantial use change but will match the uses which currently exist. Also, this change will correct the split zoning of the subdivision.
Well, um, we don't have anyone to testify in favor or against this proposal unless somebody out there has changed their mind, which doesn't look like they have done. So, um, we've heard from the applicant and, and staff simultaneously, so we'll open it up to the commission. That is your pleasure.
Well, I just had a couple clarifying questions. I mean, I think I'm pretty clear on it, just sort of, um, just information to kind of help me understand a little better, too. Um, the, what is just, I also, I kind of want to clarify off the bat, it's the relationship to the proposed development that's going to be going on at Vista de Plata subdivision?
Yeah.
Is that, uh, is there a relationship to this property? Is that?
There is a relationship, although it is correcting the split zoning, there's also a relationship to the proposed development that's going to come in. Yes.
Okay. And what's the, um, I guess, you know, playing devil's advocate, if the zoning change did not occur, what would the impact be both on terms of current landowners and potentially that?
Um, the section that is zoned industrial, they wouldn't be able to build on that. So they'd have to stick to just the, um, what is it, the west portion of it or the north, the top and the bottom.
Okay. And then my other, my other question has to do with ownership and, um, and also kind of relates to the covenants. Um, but my, I guess, is there a percentage of private ownership versus, uh, public ownership into what I would call the town ownership of these, these properties versus, I noticed on the legal descriptions, I wasn't quite sure, you know, are there any private landowners that are affected by this or is this all purely town?
There are six, there are six property owners there that were, they were all informed, so their property is being included.
Okay. So with respect to the zoning change, at least the, those folks have been notified and they have not needed to weigh in on it.
Yes. And there's covenants in place for those six pieces of property anyway, so this won't be a substantial change for them.
Right. Well, we might, yeah. The covenants have been more recently changed, were they not?
They were recently changed, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, okay. And then my, my final question just also has to do with, with res B versus res B1 and two. And just clarifying, within the land use code and the usage table that we have, um, there doesn't exist res B, res 1, or res B1, RV1 and RV2. There's, so, um, trying to think of how to phrase the question, you guys, help me if you can get to where I'm asking. If something is zoned on a map as RV or residential B right now, if you're looking at the usage table, do you refer to RV1 or RV2?
So it mostly is referred to RV2. That's how we're bringing in the RV1. So RV2 is for more higher dens, it includes higher density, you can add, have more multifamily, and RV1 limits that.
Okay. So, so anything that currently is, so, that somebody might say was zoned RV.
Would be RV.
Would actually be RV2 in the eyes of the planning department right now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So there is an important distinction that needs to get RV1. Okay. Any final questions?
Uh, mine is a very simple question. I wanted to verify because I couldn't see, uh, down the copy here, that the police and code enforcement have no issues with it.
No, they have no issues with it.
Thank you.
All right. So any further discussion from the commission? All right. Hearing ended. Someone would like to make a motion?
If I, uh, point of order of information, I don't know what kind of reason. Um, if I make a motion to recommend approval, do I have to read this whole thing? Or do we have to use the commissioner?
Um, I, I think we can probably go with the, uh, description that is on the agenda. I would feel comfortable with that unless staff has objection to that.
Yes.
All right. All right. Well, with that, uh, with that, I will make a motion to approve, I will make a motion that we recommend approval for the, uh, request for zone change from where the residential B and industrial zoning district to residential B1 for property located in the Vista de Plata subdivision.
And that's ZC 19-02.
ZC 19-02.
Do I hear a second?
Uh, yes, provided I can make a friendly amendment.
Well?
Uh, that we find the following findings, 1, 2, 4, and 7.
I ask, that is somewhat important.
Well, I have no objection to that. My second motion to approve the zone change, ZC 19-02, as stated.
All right. Very good with the incorporation of the findings recommended by staff, 1, 2, 4, and 7. All right. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion?
Nope.
All right. Hearing ended. Let's take a vote on motion to recommend approval of ZC 19-02, request for zone change from residential B and industrial zoning district to residential B1 for property located in Vista de Plata subdivision with the following findings, 1, 2, 4, and 7. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? If there's opposed, motion carries. Do we need a roll call vote on that?
We can do it, I'm just thinking.
It's, you're the boss, boss. You tell me.
Commissioner Cybo.
Aye.
Commissioner Costello.
Aye.
Commissioner Wheaton Smith.
Aye.
All right. There you are. That concludes our hearing on ZC 19-02. We'll open a public hearing on ZC 19-03, a request for zone change for attractive land from residential B zoning district to mixed-use zoning district. Property address is 716 East 16th Street, and the owner will tell us how to pronounce his name when we get him up here. Um, anyone who's interested in testifying that are in favor of or in opposition to this zone change, please step up to the podium. Same thing applies. Doesn't mean you have to testify, it just makes things a whole lot easier if you decide you want to say something down the road. Okay? Everyone's up there? If I could ask you both to raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Aye.
Hear you now. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Solumely swear.
That the testimony.
That the testimony.
I am about to give.
I'm about to give.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
On penalty of perjury.
On penalty of perjury.
Thank you. You may be seated. And we will begin with the staff report.
So this is ZC 19-03, 716 East 16th Street. It's an amendment to the official zoning map from residential B zoning district to mixed-use zoning district. So the property was originally zoned residential A in October of 2002. The owners of the property applied for a zone change to commercial. The property had been a bakery and a restaurant but was non-conforming as having vacant. The commissioner, the commission at the time suggested she apply for a zone change to residential B with a conditional use permit for a restaurant. She agreed. In November of 2002, that request was recommended to council, which was later approved. This caused a spot zone. The commissioners at the same meeting discussed a proposed mixed-use neighborhood commercial zone. The mixed-use zoning district was later introduced on a few parcels and in larger scale as per ordinance 1217 in May of 2012. Since Mr. Merrillott's property is already spot-zoned, changing it to a mixed-use zoning district would not be detrimental to the neighborhood. The residential B single-family and attached housing district is intended to accommodate low, medium, and moderate density, single-family, two-family, and multifamily residential development containing no more than 10 dwelling units, not including single-section manufactured homes, and to provide land use protection for areas that develop in such a manner. The mixed-use district is intended to accommodate a mix of small-scale commercial and residential uses and to provide a transition between commercial and surrounding residential neighborhoods. Reinvestment limited expansion of existing residential and commercial buildings and new mixed-use residential and commercial uses are encouraged. The Town of Silver City Comprehensive Plan of 2017, page 3-24C, Development Regulation and Zoning, the town should coordinate land use and community design goals with the goals of other planning elements such as housing, community design, transportation, and economic development. The town's development regulations should reflect the integrated approach to planning, ensuring all new developments have beneficial influence on the quality of life to improve future opportunities for the community. The zoning map should be updated to reflect all categories and current uses. So here is an aerial photo of the property. As you can see, it has a big parking lot. And this is how it's currently zoned. Across the street from him is a residential C, which is a mobile home park, and then to the west of his property is the mixed-use zoning district, and it's surrounded by residential A. Here's the front view of the property. Here's the residence to the right of it, and this is the daycare to the east. When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes its recommendation to the town council and when the town council makes the final decision, they shall at a minimum make at least one of the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the property, surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, and other factors. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. The proposed amendment responds to change conditions such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use of further studies that have been completed since adoption of the land use code. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objections of the land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code. It is the recommendation from the Community Development Department that this zone change may be recommended to town council based on the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The town's development regulation should reflect this integrated approach to planning, ensuring all new development has a beneficial influence on the quality of life to improve future opportunities for the community. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objections of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code. This proposed change will stay aligned with the particular purposes of the land use code, specifically purpose 1.3.5, which states to encourage a more efficient use of land and public services and to reflect changes in technology of land development.
All right. That's the staff report. Let's to invite the applicant to approach to the podium and make your presentation. Mr. Merrillott, uh, I assume the staff's kind of briefed you on this, but we just make a recommendation to the town council for your request here this evening. Um, and in that recommendation, should we choose to, um, forward one on, we'd have to meet one of these seven findings. And so if you could help us in your presentation, let, let us know how you believe your application meets those findings. That would be helpful. Thank you.
So, would you like me to speak to that now?
Absolutely. I, and whatever else you think is, might be pertinent to our decision. If you push the little white button there on the, on the base of the microphone, um, and speak into the microphone, there you go. That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, in my papers with this zone change, uh, request to start with, I put in a summary reason for the zone change request on one page. But I'm, I'm changing this to say, uh, I summarized its history, as Priscilla mentioned. But then I mentioned the current owners, me, would be, intention is to sell or use it part-time for study work in living area with no intention to finish it into a primary residence only for which it would not be suited. Well, since then, I've withdrawn it from the market from, for, for sale, which I had listed with a realtor for sale. I've, um, not making any claim that I'm going to turn it into something. I, I have been using it minimally for, uh, work in the back room for my artwork. I would say that the, my options could still be to sell it, and I would still say it's not suited really for a primary residence. Uh, but I have applied for a, um, building, building permit, uh, which I am expecting they're going to issue me the, the fee in a few days for adding a room so that I can use it more appropriately for part-time for residence because, uh, it's not really in its current condition, so, so suited for that. And right now, there's two big rooms, the entry room and then the bathrooms. And it's got, um, heat and water, but the water isn't, needs, needs work on it. So, when I mention here, I would not change, that's what I would have changed in the reason, but I would also include what I mentioned, the two findings that were consistent with the past and current use would be, um, um, number one and number seven from paragraph D of the, page 144 of the, uh, building use codes, which, um, were the two findings that I thought were, and maybe more that were at least appropriate to, they were appropriate, most appropriate to the property. And, uh, those, those findings, I don't, I don't have my copy of it, but there's, of, from the list, I think there were seven, and you, you included two that I mentioned in that.
Right.
And, uh, so the reason, the reason for the change is that, the reason for the request is that it's, it's, um, as I understand, it's been zoned residential, but there's never been a residence there. And it was used at some time as a bakery and kitchen and maybe restaurant, and all of that, that kind of, um, um, property for that was removed from it, including, um, ovens and old equipment, that was all removed. Since I took ownership of it, I removed all that. So I didn't have any plan of turning it back into a bakery or kitchen or restaurant, but as it's now zoned with the way the building appears, you know, it's not a residence and it's not been, I mean, I'm using it as such, but I'm not, um, um, I'm not requesting a zone change to, um, say I have a plan for any certain business, but I'm saying that as it's now zoned, as I'm using it, it's zoned residence and I'm using it. I've, most of, most of the time I've used, used the RV parked in the parking lot because the, the property wasn't until a few weeks ago, didn't have a, uh, even to, to cook meals or anything. So, so now that that's added, I am using it instead of the motorhome parked there. Motorhome's not parked there anymore. But it's, it's never, it's zoned residential, it's never had a residence there. Um, so mixed-use would be conforming to, um, the facts of the, the property.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Merrillott. Uh, are there any questions from the commission for the applicant? None? All right. Very good. Thank you, sir. You may be seated, and we may call on you again if something pops into someone's head. Any questions for Priscilla? I have certain, I have one anyway. Did we entertain the idea of expanding this at all? I mean, there's the daycare next door, and, um, is there, is there other property that would make it maybe not so much of a spot zone? Was that a consideration?
Well, I contacted the neighbors and thinking maybe the daycare, but it's a home daycare, so I don't know that they were interested. But everyone was contacting around there.
Interesting. Okay. Any questions from the commission?
No, I can, I can save mine for discussion.
Okay.
I just have one, my copy of the package, there was a duplicate page, and what was missing was whether some departments, uh, didn't have a problem with traffic, police, engineering cases, and code enforcement.
Correct. None of them had any issues with it. And I apologize if I didn't conclude that.
No other questions? All right. So if there's no other questions from Priscilla, um, it's about motion time, friends. Entertain a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move, I put my glasses on. I move to approve, uh, the zone change 19-03, a request for the zone change, oh, we got the red letter. Uh, I move to approve ZC 19-03, a request for a zone change for attractive land from residential B zoning district to mixed-use zoning district. The property address being 716 East 16th. B zoning district two, mixed-use zoning district, property address being 716 East 16th Street. The owner is Philip Merrillat, with findings one and seven.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. That means it's time for discussion.
So, yeah, I just want to contribute a little, just maybe just my thoughts on it. I have a feeling I don't know what I call it. But I just want to say my, I don't have, I don't think correcting, I'm in favor of it, but I don't think correcting spots, I mean, continuing to spot zone in the same spot is a valid reason for doing that. Don't worry, I'm not against it. But I just want to voice that opinion, that part of why I'm also in favor of this is because of the, it was based on action of a previous commission, and we are in a way taking corrective action with new information, new availability of a zone to put in there. But I just want to be really clear, I'm not in favor of continuing to rezone spot zoned areas. There are a couple in town, or at least one that I've noticed on the map. So, that's one thing I just want to say. Also, that I also want to address the issue of, while I am definitely sympathetic to the usage, and that building has a particular, you know, usage historically, which that is the reason for having grandfathering in of unconditional use permits for properties. That all said, I continue to be in favor of it because of some other factors, and at least of which being the proximity to these other zones, including mixed use and other areas right around there. So, I think its location, it enjoys a unique status, or this is sort of a unique issue to the local rezoning in this particular case. I just want to be really clear about why I'm in favor of it, so that we don't get future spot zone requests for, you know, in a similar way, if I can't use the building that I purchased for a particular use, because it doesn't conform to the zone that I'm in. That's why grandfathering expires and all that. In this particular case, though, I'm in favor of it, because I do think it enjoys a unique geographic location next to these other zones. So, hopefully I made that clear, but yeah, I'm in favor of it, that, that you said that.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
No further questions.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Wheaton Smith. I guess my thoughts on this, you know, spot zoning is one of those things that's drilled into your head as a commissary, is a bad thing. If you're involved in land use, it sort of defeats the whole purpose of having zoning, frankly. The reason you have it is to have a large block of land, usually something roughly equivalent to a neighborhood, where you're providing some guarantees to the property owners in there, that they'll have some idea what's going to happen in their neighborhood in the future. You know, I've served on a number of these commissions over the years with different staff people who have kind of gone, and, you know, for a while, there was a contention that I didn't necessarily agree with, that, you know, different residential zones didn't necessarily constitute spot zoning. So, having residential B and residential A was fine, because it was all still residential. I'm not sure I sign on to that, but even if I did, my concern about this one is that we're straying even further away from that in incorporating more commercial uses. So, I'm troubled, I guess, somewhat, by the application. So, I'll put that out there. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
To me, I think it's a history, so I have to agree with Commissioner Costello. I think that's what makes it valid. And I do agree with you, I love the English humor of replacing one's spot zoning with another. But I think there is a historical basis for it.
I wanted to comment.
If you'd like to approach the podium.
So, I wanted to comment, you know, I had taken possession and removed, there's a large amount of garbage in it, things that were inside for when it was used as a bakery, including these couple-ton ovens. And so, it has no history of being used as a residence. And yet, when I want it as a tax sale, it had $63,000 assigned for a residence, and then a total, it was around $63,000, as I recall, maybe it was $65,000. And then a total valuation of $222,000. I had tried selling it to close to half that, and didn't get any interest. But I had to get an appraiser from the assessor's department to come down there and physically show him that, because he even thought, well, maybe there was a residence in the back portion of it, physically show him that it could have never been used as a residence. So, they had on the taxes, which were delinquent for so many years, maybe it was 10 years, but it was sold at the tax sale. And I paid those accumulated delinquent taxes, which included this substantial portion, which was residence. And yet, it never had a residence, never had it on the property. I don't know what happened there. Nobody speculated what happened there, how they had that in the valuation. But if you leave it as it is, residential, it's been used as a kitchen and bakery, never been used as a residence. It's not, the building is not first suited for just a residence. If you saw the back room, which is most of the building now, is unheated. It's just metal, you know, metal walls, metal, metal. It doesn't, it doesn't even stay warm in the winter. So, that most of the building, that's the back area, so that you would have had it zoned residential, and that in some way you would hope now it would be a residence, well, you could spend a lot of money, and it still wouldn't, it still wouldn't be a residence in the way the neighborhood is, is where the neighbors' residence. It would still look like what it is. It looks like a warehouse, in the back especially, in the front and side, it looks, it doesn't look like a residence. So, if you would hope it would become residence by having it zoned, that it's never been one. And it is an odd, odd case, because between these two homes, that are obviously homes and residences, and it doesn't resemble them at all, and it has this large, large parking area, which is concrete for maybe 15 vehicles. If that could have been a residence at one time, then it would have been appropriate that the county would have had that $63,000 or $65,000 in there in the taxes that collected, which I paid, and that's fine, because I bought it at a tax sale. I didn't, I wasn't promised anything. You know, I was just paying delinquent taxes, that's all. And I was the high bidder. Didn't have anything to do with what happened to the money. There's no question or claim there by me or anybody, I mean, that run to the county. So, but I'm just explaining to you that it's been zoned residential, and in a year or so, I had it for sale, I was expecting, you know, I might get one offer, but it's just as well I didn't, because it was only a couple of months ago, I found out it was zoned residential. And I would have had a real problem if I'd gotten somebody wanting to buy it, and then they find out it's zoned residential, and they can't use it for anything that it's most suited for right now, which is not a residence. So, it's a good thing I found out, but it came as a real surprise. And so, it's really, this whole issue is more about, I think, about mistake, and how it was zoned to begin with, more than anything. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Merrillat. I just want to make clear that, you know, my comments, my concerns with this are just, you know, when you're dealing with zoning, and our responsibility here, we really are sort of required to take the long view of property. The idea being that, you know, the decisions we make will outlive any particular owner, and in many cases, any particular building. We have to look at neighborhood-level development patterns, and the direction we want to move as a community. I just keep thinking about, you know, a building being not particularly well-suited to a residence, but, you know, until recently, I lived just a house away from the intersection of Market Street and Cooper Street, which, you know, once was on the highway out of town, and was a very commercial area. And, you know, sort of across the street from me, there was a building that was built to be a service station initially, but is now a duplex. The same building, the gas station, is still under there, but it got turned into a duplex. There's what used to be a garage that's up in the next block. And then just recently, the cinder block box that was a surveyor's office for decades has now been turned into what is a very nice little house. You know, looking at that six months ago, I doubt anyone would have predicted how nicely that could be turned into something else. So, those are the sorts of considerations that we have to deal with, rather than what the building is now, what the character of that neighborhood is, and as a community, what we think it should become. So, that's my concern. When we're looking at zone changes, certainly would much rather have it be a larger-scale thing that is forward-looking towards how we want the community to develop in a proactive way, rather than reacting to something done that was done by our predecessors. So, Priscilla, I have one question for you. So, this is a recommendation to the town council. It does not require a specific, we just need a majority vote in favor to advance it to the council, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So, any other discussion from the commission?
No.
Okay. There is no further discussion. We have a motion to recommend approval of ZC 19-03, a request for zone change for attractive land from residential B zoning to mixed-use zoning. Property address is 716 East 16th Street. Owner is Philip Merrillat, with the following findings, one and seven. Hearing no further discussion on the motion, I guess we'll have a roll call, though.
Commissioner Seidel?
No.
Commissioner Costello?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Wheaton Smith?
Aye.
All right, and the motion carries. And again, this will be forwarded to the town council for their review. And again, I made clear my vote didn't have anything to do with you or the property, is the larger issue of, you know, what we're doing, and my view of what that is. So, we'll move on then to new business, for which we have none. We have no community forum scheduled, so that brings us to reports from staff.
So, the only thing I wanted to add, at the last meeting in September, I think Commissioner Kara brought up the fact of having data for dwelling units. And I know that the census of 2020 that's going to come up, they have, they're going to have a count of dwelling units, so we will have that data next year.
Nice. Excellent. So, that's maybe the reports from the commission.
I have a report, but just something that I wanted to comment on, too, sort of in the context of the two presentations that we had today. And just because I didn't say earlier, I should have said in the context of the first hearing, I do think that information about the planned subdivision development would have been pertinent and appropriate to include, and I was really pleased to see all the history in this latter one, and just as a feedback, that I don't think we can have too much information on something. So, that was a, just want to say.
Because this was planned for a prior meeting before it was going to be approved by council, I couldn't just assume, and I should have added the agreements that were done, but there's still a lot of things up in the air with that agreement, so I didn't really want to comment on it yet, until everything was finalized. But I guess I could have included it.
Yeah, I just want to say, and again, I'm sorry I didn't say this in the discussion around it, but I just want to make sure it's out there. I think more disclosure is better, you know, in terms of just putting that out there, that this is what's happening in the area. Here's more context of what's going on in this subdivision, even if it's proposed or pending. I, you know, I happen to know about it through my work and through local media, but, you know, it would be, I think it's worth considering for future stuff, that, you know, we want to have what's pertinent to what's at hand, but we also want to make sure that there's enough information. So, that's all. I don't think there's anything wrong, we just, I have more information.
Well, within our department, when we spoke of it, they thought it would be better until everything was finalized to just do this as a zone change, although still, it was before it went to council, that we had done our staff report and stuff.
Okay. Well, there's no take backs, so. Not going to rezone it back to industrial, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Commissioner Costello. Commissioner Wheaton Smith?
Nothing else.
All right. Under reports for commission, I will throw out there that municipal elections for Silver City are coming up before we know it. And although the other municipalities in Grand County have moved to the consolidated local election, which we just had yesterday, Silver Cities could remain on the old schedule, having their elections in March, which means filing day will be upon us soon. And if you've ever thought about running for town council, those terms are going to go from two years to four years. And I think I would really like to see some competition, speaking personally, and not as the chair of this commission, mind you, I'd like to see some competition, some diversity of ideas in that election cycle. And so, it certainly encourages people to think now about maybe declaring candidacy. And if they're interested in that, I know there will be some prospective candidate trainings that the newspaper will be sponsoring here in the next couple of months. So, it's a great opportunity to get out there and really, really help build your community. So, I'll put that there. All right, that concludes the reports from the commission, and community input. Community, do you have any input? You don't have to be sworn in. This is, you can just come on up to, come on up to the podium. Probably all of our viewers on television can hear what you're saying, besides just us.
Now, I-
Do introduce yourself, though, if you would.
Pardon me?
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Karen Morrison, and I've only been in Silver City for a year and a half, so I find myself new, and I'd rather stand back and watch how things work first. But tonight, I did have an opinion, and Commissioner Seidel, I very much saw your point of view about not wanting to change it, not for that specific property. What you were looking at was the greater good for the neighborhood. So, I understood your point of view. I looked online to see what that property looks like, and I was very surprised that it ever was residential. So, I also see the person who applied for this change, his point of view, but I think the greater point of view is very important. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And whatever it was that motivated you to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tonight, appreciate you both being here. It's always nice to, it's always nice to not just be here in front of an empty room or something. All right, that concludes community input. If there's no other business, we do have a meeting next month?
No.
No?
We do have a schedule for January, though.
For January?
Yes, January 7.
Okay. That's a first one. All right, very good. While if there's no other business, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move the adjourn. Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.